Good evening, welcome to the regular session of the Highland Village City Council. Today is Tuesday, September 27th. The meeting is called to order at 6:45 PM. Let the record show all council members are present. To run off the top, do we want to do clarification first and discussion second? Alright, does anybody have anything on the action agenda that or consent that they wanted clarification on or anything like that?
I have a copy of that.
Yeah, where's the, uh...
Of the agenda itself?
Yes.
Just in case I want to read what's on the agenda.
After I printed off the 500-page report.
A paper to print agenda.
I have no...
We have a copy in here and I apologize, guys.
Okay, my own word.
I've read my own word too, my machine almost broke.
By the time we get it, I think we're on the bottom now.
So, so just, I'll verbally really quick run through it. So, item 11, or item 20, 10 is the minutes. Item 11 is a resolution for the interlocal agreement for the school resource officer program agreement. Item 12 is a renewal of the interlocal agreement with TML, Intergovernmental Risk Pool for Insurance Coverage. Item 13 is the annual renewal of the financial software maintenance agreement with Tyler Technologies.
I did have a question on that one.
Okay.
And that was, it's budgeted and it's within budget, but it's beyond your limits. What are your limits? Just so I know.
So, can we put that on there because it was above 50,000?
Yeah. If it's budgeted, you can just sign off of it out, council approval, 50 grand. Over that, even as though it's budgeted, you need council approval. Okay?
Alright, any other questions or anything on consent? And then active, or action agenda is just, it's board and commission discussion and then they, uh, board and commission discussion.
That's every action.
Yeah. Alright, so if there's no questions or anything like that, we'll just jump right into board and commissions.
Okay, so, um, we've kind of already been through this process for a few months now, so, you know, in several months, we solicited three applications and we also reached out to currently serving board members who have terms expiring this year to see if they were interested in serving again, maybe moving to a different board or rolling off. Um, we do have term limits in place and we have no one that termed out this year. According to our board members, you can serve four consecutive terms and then after that you have to go off to another board. So, why does it mean we don't have anyone that's termed out this time? We've been provided copies of applications, the board member profile updates for currently serving members. We've also held a meet and greet at the last council meeting, so this is an opportunity for council to discuss board appointments, also to review attendance, see if there's anyone that may warrant removal based on that attendance policy and such. Anything over 25% of the meetings missed is something the council can consider if someone needs that, you know, for removal. Prior to their term expiring, so let me kind of clarify, I've had that a little bit. The removal process would only be for people whose terms are not expiring this year. It would expire next year and you would be removing them.
Otherwise, you just elect not to report.
Right, so, so with that, like I said, this is an opportunity for council to discuss considerations on appointments. We do have a few boards that you can go into closed session to discuss and that is limited to planning and zoning commission, zoning board of adjustment, and 4B.
Typically, for Sean and Brian, I don't know if they, if it was done the same way back in the day with your first tour, but what we've done in the 10 years past is the ones like Parks and 4B and Ethics, we do, we've done those first and then whenever we have to go into closed session for what we do next, so that we can just kind of keep them all kind of in a line like that. So, if we can do it that way or if somebody wants to do it a different way, I'm open to suggestion. Alright, so, you want to go through it like with the book and start with board of ethics? Is that what you said? Alright.
So, for board of ethics, we have two positions whose terms expire this year. We did have a few applicants interested, new applicants that were interested in serving on ethics. As far as the currently serving board members, we have one that wanted to stay, Jordan Wooten, wanted to continue serving on the ethics board. Joseph Kay was interested in serving on a different board.
This is where you can start making your case.
I don't have an opinion. I mean, if I offered an opinion, if Kay wants to go to a different board, we've got one. Megan Pigo did ethics as a first choice. I was impressed with her in the interview. So, if I was going to make a recommendation, I would say we could at least move Joseph aside and put Megan in his spot on ethics. And someone new in.
Is there Stanford engineer?
Yeah. By the way, that doesn't mean Joseph Kay gets a spot.
Right.
So, does...
You said, was it Joseph Kay? I'm trying to remember, was it Joseph Kay that said he wanted to move?
Joseph Kay would like to move to a different board, Pansy was his first choice.
Or Megan, whatever it is. Pigo?
Yeah.
Piga?
Yeah, yeah, Piga, yeah. When did you want to reappoint Jordan?
Yeah, we reappointed Jordan Wooten.
I have no problem with that.
You can do 4B if you put on that list, but...
4B. That Lombardo guy, we've got to do something about him and his attendance problems.
You want to stay on, right?
Uh, yeah, I'm fine with staying on.
I would like to get Rick Reiki on there. I think he would be a great addition.
Who?
Rick Reiki, Dana Reiki.
On 4B?
On the 4B. Yes, that was his first choice.
So, who's...
He came in and interviewed us.
Yeah, right.
Well, it's a good question.
Well, because the Lombardo space has to be filled by the city council members, right?
Yeah, council member, correct.
Right, assuming you don't want...
I can't be on it because I won't be there when the next meeting is.
51st, huh? 51st birthday. Is that where you were going on your birthday?
Yeah, I was gone.
But your 51st birthday next year.
But, next time around, I won't be here. Period.
Yes, you won't be.
I'll be gone on my birthday probably.
What is the feeling for Jared Christensen?
Is that, is that the...
He wants to be on the same...
Is he the one that's up for renewal?
Yeah, Jared is.
Okay.
Jared Christensen and Elizabeth Meacham, Elizabeth Meacham wants to move to a different place.
So, we could replace her spot.
And Reiki.
Yeah.
I want to bring up another name and not necessarily just for here, but Adam Ballard, he was the Marine, came in at the end of the evening. His first choice is 4B. So, you know, I would like to support him for 4B, which would be Jared Christensen, because he's on the board.
Right, that's true.
But I also want us to maybe put his name in a P and Z, because we'll get into that a little bit later.
I agree.
The Marine?
That's his second choice, but it's also he's of the generation we need.
I like him, both him and Patrick Finch.
The last two guys were both some very high-quality individuals that would service well, I think.
I'd like to see both those guys on P and Z, so...
So, I want to toss that out, so maybe we, I want Adam on one or the other. Would you like to put him on P and Z?
I would too.
You're not going to put him on P and Z, or if you're not going to put him, if you're not going to put him on 4B. Even Jared in that spot?
Well, that's great, you're right.
Jared? Remove and Meacham, so we can have somebody fill that spot.
Okay, let's look at...
Obviously, if we've got people who want, and we've got some good people, and that guy's on two, he needs to be on one.
Patrick Finch wanted to be on two. He was also high-quality, he was one of the last two.
Yes.
So, we could put him and Jared Christensen's spot.
I would agree.
I like that, John.
Undo that if we don't get Adam on P and Z.
So, we're kind of...
We're playing chess.
So, summarizing then, we want to get Adam on something, preferably P and Z if possible. So, that leaves us with the...
Your guy goes on...
For Meacham.
Reiki.
Reiki?
Okay, Re Meacham.
Okay.
And then Finch goes in for Christensen. So, who's going to have Meacham?
Reiki.
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 It's blank, is his term?
And then Jared...
That was a joke? No, his term is not.
You would put in...
Well, Jared just comes off of that because he's currently on P and Z.
So, we leave him on P and Z, take him off and you would want to replace him with the...
Which was the choice?
Finch.
Finch.
As long as we let Jared have two spots just because 4B didn't meet that offer.
Right.
Alright. You want to move Howard, if we can, to P and Z.
I have a second there.
But we're not to P and Z.
We're not to P and Z, yeah?
Right.
Not yet, we're in closed session, so I'm with you.
So, why don't you lucky gentlemen get my spot?
Well, you're not up.
Oh, I'm not?
We'll deal with yours when you're gone.
Yours is next year.
We'll deal with your spot, we'll deal with your spot posthumously.
Just correct if I'm wrong, I won't be there. So, we're going to, if we're doing for a point...
But we'll deal with that next year, yes, yes.
You'll be open. Vacancy hasn't been created.
Okay, okay.
Right, alright.
We don't want you gone yet.
Well, if we don't have to shut up, I'll do it.
Once a year, once a year.
Okay, so...
So, we're going to leave Mr. Lombardo on even though he's going to not attend the meeting?
I mean, I guess we could remove him.
I mean, it makes, it makes sense since my, I know it's my term, but I will not, I'll be turned out.
He'll already be...
We can make the appointment between the election and July.
We did that with Charlotte.
That's what we, yeah, we usually do that every year.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, but I wasn't clear, it was that far off, sorry. I thought it was coming out.
No.
No, it's going to be after I'm gone.
Okay, so, Parks and Rec. Those were up.
So, William, Bill Irwin, Janet Gerschenfeld, Mitchell Bray, and Hogan Heathington. Places 1, 2, 3, and alternate place 2. Term expires this year.
So, just a level set, they're all up, they all prefer to stay and they all prefer to stay on the current board. Is that correct? Am I reading that right?
What's the asterisk mean?
An asterisk is if, so the asterisk is that their first preference would be staying on the same board, but if you needed to move them, they would be willing to do so.
Ah, okay.
I'm good with the Parks and Rec.
Leaving it the way it is?
I am.
Okay, John?
My concern is with Janet. Nothing on performance, but 37% missing, maybe? Even with notice, it's a matter of priority.
So... Who are you suggesting then?
I don't have a suggestion, I just have a...
The feedback I've gotten from the board liaisons is that Janet, that all of them actually are good board members and yes, we're mindful of that attendance issue. So, just wanted to put that out there, that they, they...
Be used your word, I won't die on this one. I just wanted to bring that up.
Die on that hill?
37% is a lot.
I just thought that was important to share.
And you're fast to 10 minutes is a thing.
Yeah, I get that.
And if there's someone that really, really wants it, but the others who have that as a number one, I already struck off because they were not impressive at all. And Tyler Gump, he didn't show, right?
Who was there?
Uh, he was there.
He was there, wasn't he?
Yes, he was there.
He's a trail steward, outdoors coach, so he would almost be ideal.
Does the alternate, I was going to see, he was...
I think he'd be good. I think he's, I mean, he's been sitting in the Parks and Rec, so...
Alternate, too.
There's an alternative.
He's active in the law.
I had voted for him as well. I mean, three out of eight meetings is pretty, pretty rough.
So...
So, an option?
It's nice that you're going to move people around so to look at those alternates.
An option? There's Hogan Heathington, we appointed him in March. He's a good, he's a good member as an alternate, we can move him up and then we put somebody in that alternate spot.
Yep, but Tyler, but Tyler Gump in that alternate spot.
Yeah. Okay.
So, Janet is...
That still gives a good spread of seniority.
So, everybody understands moving, moving up to replace Janet Gerschenfeld. Alright. Leaving everybody else to say. Bye. Alright, now we're into the good stuff. Supposing we want to go into closed session now?
Might as well.
Yeah. So, uh...
We want to do the, and we're just, we're limited to finding zones closed session.
Well, all of them, yeah. So, under item... Yeah, item 3B, section 551 dot Joseph, forward deliberate the appointment removal evaluation and duties of public officers, specifically members of the planning and zoning commission, zoning board of adjustment, and directors of Highland Village Community Development Corporation. We are now going to close session at 7:02 PM. Good evening, welcome to the Highland Village City Council meeting. Today is Tuesday, September 27th. The meeting is called to order at 7:47 PM. Let the record show all council members are present. Please join Mayor Pro Tim Lombardo in leading the prayer and the pledge of allegiance.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community, which will help us make the best decisions for our beloved city. We ask that you help our state and national leaders make the best decisions possible for the sake of all of our citizens. We ask that you watch over the people of the Caribbean and the state of Florida as Hurricane Ian passes through the region. Finally, we ask that you watch over the residents of Highland Village as well as our brave first responders and military personnel. In your most blessed name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is visitor comments, I don't think we have any, is that correct? Ms. Miller? No visitor comments? Just off this huge crowd, just wanted to make sure. Item number eight, mayor and council reports pursuant to Texas Government Code, section 551 dot 0415. City council may report on the following items: expressions of thanks, congratulations or condolences, information about holiday schedules, recognition of individuals, reminders about upcoming city council events, information about community events and announcements involving imminent threat to public health and safety. Does anyone have any items they'd like to report?
I'd like to say congratulations to the Stephen F. Austin State University Lumberjacks and their 98 to nothing triumph.
Well, then, along those lines, I'd like to congratulate the mighty Marcus Marauders going 1-0 in district play last week, beating Hebron. They have the mound showdown against Flower Mound this Friday night. If you haven't gotten tickets for that game yet, good luck, it's probably already sold out.
Do you not want to give condolences to Warner?
Warner, the Warner University Royals.
And I'd also like to congratulate my daughter Emily for an awesome softball game tonight. I didn't get to attend, but I was given updates on how they did. I won't embarrass her with the riches of their 15 to nothing victory and her several strikeouts, but congratulations, Emily. And then lastly, just offer our prayers and wishes for a fast healing to our former mayor Diane Costa. She had surgery last week and I understand she's resting home comfortably and getting better, so keep up the work.
Yeah, I think, want to give recognition to Chief Rime for the successful stake in Stetson's fundraiser on Friday night, conflicting with football games and Western Week and lots of other conflicts. There was a huge crowd out to support the Special Olympics, so good job.
Second that, and my apologies for not attending, I was coaching softball Friday night.
Thank you. Hope you don't mind me stepping up here real quick, but I was going to address you, all of you, for thanking you for being there. I knew you couldn't make it. To get as many of you there at the same place at the same time was amazing. It was a little scary, three weeks out before we, for filling the seats. I had three unpaid seats that night, okay? So, that's how close we were to filling that place up. Overall, great, great, great. I thank city manager Paul Stevens for his support and letting me do that. You know, if you've been there in the past too, the joy, the uplifting events and the true happiness generated in that room by the time you leave, so thank you again for everything.
Thank you. Congratulations, can't wait to hear after, after October 15th, how we've done overall.
Pushing, pushing, pushing.
Last call? Alright, item number nine, moving on to city manager and staff reports. Mr. Stevens, anything to report?
Mayor, nothing for me, but we do have a village report, so...
So...
I wish there was. I believe you're alluding to the text dot work.
Yeah.
And Scott, you may have an answer to that. Do you know when the, I know the contract has been led, the start date has been there, they put signs up.
When are they actually going to turn dirt?
Your guess is as good as running and turning dirt. The contract time has started in 71 days.
Okay. Charlotte, there's your answer.
Join us for Concerts in the Park at Doubletree Ranch Park. Live 80 kicks off our concert series with high-energy hits from the 80s on Saturday, October 1st. Then, Jukebox Heroes plays all of your favorite Top 40 hits from the last 50 years on Saturday, October 8th. Both concerts start at 7:00 PM and concessions will be available from a yummy variety of food truck vendors. So, grab your lawn chairs and blankets and join us for a free night of live music and family-friendly fun. The TX Fallon PD Tribute Event has a new home, Doubletree Ranch Park. Join us on October 15th as the community comes together with local police departments to celebrate, honor, and support the families of Texas fallen officers. Event day activities start at 8:00 AM for our annual 5K Run or Walk. Then later, at 3:00 PM, come enjoy live entertainment, specialty vendors, a yummy variety of food trucks, and a kid zone provided by Excite. Kiddos will get a chance to take a short bike ride through the park with an officer at Kid Ride with a Cup. At 4:00 PM, cheer on police departments and citizens as they participate in our yearly Bike Honor Race. And to top the night off, we have Texas Flood coming to play the great songs of Stevie Ray Vaughan. So, save the date of October 15th to show your support at the TX Fallon PD Tribute Event. And there's still time for you to sign up for the 5K Run or the Bike Race. Visit txfallonpd.com now to sign up and give back to our local heroes.
Alright, moving on to the consent agenda. All of the items on the consent agenda are considered for approval by a single motion and a vote without discussion. Each council member has the option of removing an item from this agenda so that it may be considered separately and/or adding any item from the action agenda to be considered as part of the consent agenda items. Consent agenda items include, item number 10, consider approval of minutes of the special joint workshop held on August 30th, 2022, and of the regular city council meeting held on September 13th, 2022. Item number 11 is consider resolution 2022 dash 3019 authorizing a school resource officer enter local agreement with the Lewisville Independent School District. Item number 12 is consider resolution 2022 dash 3021 authorizing renewal of the interlocal agreement with TML Intergovernmental Risk Pool for Insurance Coverage. And then item 13 is consider resolution 2022 dash 3022 authorizing the annual renewal of the financial software maintenance agreement with Tyler Technologies. Would anybody like to make a motion? Mr. Lombardo?
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items 10 through 13.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Alright, first, our motion by Mr. Lombardo, second by Mr. Heslop. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, and just real quick note, personal note, the item number 11, the interlocal with, on the school resource officer, I want to just publicly thank the school district, the school board, and our superintendent, Dr. Lori Rapp, for their action on this item. The second SRO, for those of you that don't know, the second SRO is a position that the city has fully funded up till now. The school district is ponying up 75% of that cost. That's a tremendous commitment from the school district, so I'm very pleased with that action. Moving on to action agenda, we did meet in closed session and we do have action to take out of that. Item number 15 is review and discuss the attendance record and performance of city board and commission members and consider removal of board and commission members prior to completion of their current term pursuant to code of ordinance, this is section 2 dot 04 dot 037. I don't believe we had any of those, correct? So, there's no action to take on that item. Item number 16, so, well, just to back up, since there were, since there were no issues, we don't have to take any action at all, right?
On item...
On item 15?
So, item 15 is if council chooses to take action, you can, but it's not required.
Okay, so, and we didn't have any way that we were...
No, you discussed board and commission appointments during early work session to kind of come to a consensus and there was no indication of anybody being removed prior to their...
Term expiring?
Right.
Okay. Alright, so moving on to item 16, consider resolution 2022 dash zero, or 3020, appointing member, members to various positions on the Board of Ethics, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Planning and Zoning Commission, Zoning Board of Adjustment, and Highland Village Community Development Corporation. This one, we did take action on in, in closed session and so...
No action, just a consensus?
Just a consensus?
No action.
Yeah, it's true, just a consensus, true.
Sorry.
Thank you for that correction. Alright, so, Mr. Feaster?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion that we approve resolution, resolution 2022 dash 3020, appointing the following people to the following positions. So, section one, Board of Ethics, we would be appointing Megan Piggott and Jordan Wooten. Section two, the Highland Village Community Development Corporation, we appoint Rick Reiki, Citizens Representative, Patrick Finch, Citizens Representative, and reappoint Dan Jaworski as the council representative. Section three, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, appoint William Irwin to place one, Hogan Heathington to place two, Mitchell Bray to place three, Tyler Gump, alternate place two. Section four, appoint to the Planning and Zoning Commission, Brent Myers to place two, Steve Winkle, place three, Adam Ballard, alternate two, and Greg Khan, alternate one. And then lastly, section five, the zoning board of adjustment, place Jerry Jones in place four, I believe? It's hard to read.
Sorry.
Overwritten. I believe that's place four.
Can you read it?
It looks like place four, yeah. The next one says place five, so...
Russell Jackson, place five, Colin Roberts, alternate two, Luann Sarat, alternate three.
Alright, is there a second?
I have a second.
I have a second.
Councilman Kicks, I have a second. Any discussion on any of this before we vote? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. And that concludes our action agenda, we're moving into late work session. Status reports on current projects and discussion on future agenda items. Does anybody have anything to report or future items to discuss?
I do. Just a question for Mr. Stevens. We had to kind of rush through the early session with the comprehensive plan due to time. Just remind us on the next steps going forward and when we can expect those.
Since we didn't really get to completely end the discussion, I would say, as we talked about, if there are any comments, send those to me, and if it's best for us to carry that over as a discussion item to the next council meeting, we can certainly do that. And we will, I think it was mentioned, a public, a formal public hearing will be required before adoption, so we would need to schedule that as well.
And the draft, is it's going to be made public for resident review?
Yes.
Or has it already?
It'll be, it'll be this week, yeah. It'll be on the website.
So public can review it, and if you have questions, comments, or concerns, you can email all of them, send all of them to Paul.
That's fine.
No, you can email council as well, as well as members of planning and zoning and staff, so we hope that the public will contribute that way. Mr. Fiorenza, or Mr. Heslop, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just, and I hope I speak for the rest of the council. Paul, last year, we charged you in our retreat with putting a comprehensive plan together to figure out new, and help us figure out new and innovative ways to, you know, generate new revenue, bring about new life in our city, and I commend you and the staff and everybody who put hard work into that comprehensive plan. I think you did a great job, and congratulations.
Well, thank you. It was a real team effort by everyone, and thank you all for your support for moving forward with that project.
All right, if there's nothing else, we'll adjourn. We adjourn to 8:01.